Hey, it is five thirty-one. I'll bring the Tuesday, April fifteenth, two hundred and twenty-five, Planning Commission meeting to order. Chris.
Bye. All right, Ms. Proper.
Yeah.
Mr. Giller.
Here.
Mr. Lees. Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Garrett.
Here.
Ms. Gort. And Mr. Fractor.
Here.
Uh, any changes to the minutes, commissioners? No, any changes to the agenda, Chris?
Uh, no changes to the agenda.
Great. Now, I'm gonna open the meeting to public comment on historic preservation issues that are not on the agenda this evening. As part of a certified local government, we are asked to take com- public comment on historic preservation issues in the community. With that, I will open the meeting to any public comment. Raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone, and then star six to unmute yourself. Have anybody online?
No one who wishes to comment.
Would anybody in the comment on historic preservation issues? No, with that, we will move on to the to the public comment, uh, oh, I'm sorry, hold on a minute. Uh, the preliminary hearing on historic shed reconstruction, three oh three North Main Street, two A, PL twenty twenty twenty-four dash zero three five four. And I believe we'll have Ellie presenting that to us.
Yes. Um, good evening, Commission. Before you is the second preliminary hearing for the historic shed reconstruction at three oh three North Main Street. Um, the shed is, um, lo- or was located in the rear of the property between two primary structures known as the Williams House to the south, which you can see right here. If I can zoom in. Where you want, Lee.
Stand there and hold it.
Um, the Williams House located to the south and the Willoughby Cottage located to the north. Um, it was believed to have been built in eighteen ninety, um, and historically used as an ice house. Um, it was previously moved in nineteen ninety as part of relocating the Willoughby Cottage to the site. Um, and then at some point in twenty twelve, um, a door was added to the north facade of the shed. Um, but otherwise, the shed was clad in unpainted vertical wood planking and featured a steeply pitched corrugated metal gable roof, um, and then had a set of paired vertical wood plank doors on the west elevation and no windows. Um, it was roughly eight feet by twelve feet and was described to be in good condition and historically important in the Cultural Resource Survey. Um, the shed was discovered, um, by staff to have been removed and replaced with a paved parking area, which you can see here. Um, so the shed was previously located right in this area. Um, and, um, this was discovered by staff in twenty twenty-four, um, and staff was there able to narrow down the time of removal to a three-week period in twenty twenty-two. Um, this application was previously brought before the Commission for Preliminary Hearing on November fifth of last year. Um, and during the hearing, the Commission requested additional information on the materials used to rebuild the shed and further detail on the foundation. Um, so since that first hearing, the applicant has provided additional information, um, as well as a detailed foundation and framing plan, um, which is accompanied by a stamped engineer's letter. Um, and then it was also discovered that the original historic doors to the shed were preserved and will be reinstalled, um, which here's a photo of those doors here, um, which are currently onsite. Um, and then additionally, as part of this project, the newly created paved area to the south of the site will be removed and revegetated due to the property already exceeding their maximum allowed parking. Um, so to get into some precedent research, um, this is the first, um, historic structure removal that staff is aware of, um, since the creation of code section nine one six E, which we will get into. Um, so staff reached out to other Colorado towns and cities with historic districts and found a case, a similar case with the city of Boulder, where a, um, historical coal shed slash chicken coop was demolished in twenty thirteen. Um, and that ended up with the Boulder City Council calling up the Landmark Board's decision to not rebuild the shed, and they actually made the applicant tear out the basketball court that had been built in its place and rebuild the historic shed to not set precedent for allowing historic demolitions. Um, after the fact. Um, staff believes that one, um, that one of the most impactful consequences of removing a historic structure is requiring it to be rebuilt as it was, as nothing ends up being gained by the applicant for removing the structure, and it sets profit- precedence to heavily discourage similar removals in the future. Um, so as far as staff comments, um, we mainly looked at nine one six E, um, which is the remedy for unapproved demolition or destruction of historic structures, which requires the structure to be reconstructed as closely as possible to its original condition at the time it was destroyed. Um, and most of the original materials for the shed were discarded during demolition, except for the, um, historic doors. But the applicant proposes to rebuild the shed in the same location and match the shed prior to removal as closely as possible. Um, there have been several reference photos of the shed that were provided to the applicant. Um, and then, um, the applicant has also provided additional materials, um, with a physical material board that I will pass around for the commissioners to take a look at. Um, and the applicant proposes to rebuild the shed on a thickened edge slab on grade. Um, and then the materials which you're looking at now will consist of self-rusting corrugated metal roofing and reclaimed rough sun vertical siding of various widths. Um, and, um, staff has consulted with our chief building official on the proposed foundation, um, and he's preliminarily endorsed the design. Um, looking at the priority design standards that would play into this, um, staff finds the location of the shed to comply, um, with design standard four, um, because it was, um, uh, because it's located behind the primary structure and respects historic settlement patterns despite not being its original location. Um, it was the location that was previous. Um, staff also finds that the project meets design standard one eighty-six, um, as the applicant proposes to match the room for roof form in both angle and scale to that which was previously existing. Uh, for design standard ninety, um, the applicant proposes to use the, um, reclaimed rough sun vertical wood planks, um, uh, which will match the shed prior to removal. And then for design standard ninety-six, um, the applicant is not proposing to rebuild the door that was previously added to the north facade and plans to only keep the one historic opening on the west facade with those historic doors. And yep. Um, staff found that the application meets all the absolute and relative policies of the Development Code and did not award any points and has a couple of questions for the Commission.
Thank you, Ellie. Any questions for staff? Would you like to start it off, Susan?
Uh, I have no question.
Mark, any questions for staff?
I have none. Everything is very clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Mike, any questions?
Questions?
Voice record.
Right? That, questions?
I do not have any questions. Thanks.
Yeah, I have questions. Okay. I wanna talk about the Bull, what the city of Boulder did. So
Okay.
Did they have to rebuild it to look historical and has it been rebuilt?
Um, so it was rebuilt to look, um, as close to as it had previously, um, and it has been rebuilt. Um, in initial in an, in an initial draft of the staff report, I had photos of that shed previously. Um, I don't know that I have an easy way to pull this up at this time.
And did they have to do any, did they have to pay any fines or fees on top of it?
Um, I believe there were some fines that were associated with it. Um, I think it was in relation to kind of their base fine structure and just generally how they have, um, like unapproved work, um, structured. Um, but I don't, um, I'd have to look into that further to give you specific information.
Okay. And did you consult the historical group here on this? About their opinions on it?
As for Breck history, you mean?
Yeah, yeah, like what they thought might be best.
Um, I believe Breck History is aware of the situation. Um, we haven't really, um, consulted with them specifically. Um, and they, um, the project maybe it's slightly out of their purview, um, and it's more the Planning Commission's decision um, on what happens, um, but we could, um, consult with them prior to the final hearing additionally.
They, I just think they might have an opinion on like making things look historical, but that aren't kind of like this.
I mean, in general, just from kind of leading up to this, I mean, outbuildings were a focus of Breck History and it was a, a board member who brought, you know, the issue of some of the, the outbuildings that were starting to kind of sag and maybe, um, could of failing. And so we, we worked, you know, pretty extensively on that section of the code, um, with Larissa and her team. Um, but on this one specifically, since our code has a specific prescription of what of what to do, um, I don't think we, we really reached out for their, you know, opinion specifically. And, 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 I mean, I mean, they'd be welcome to write a letter on behalf or, or make public comment like anyone else, but this one being more of a quasi judicial matter versus, um, you know, something where we're doing a code amendment, it, it's a little dangerous to ask for, you know, a recommendation from an outside body when it relates to quasi judicial matter versus when we were writing the code and we worked, you know,
Yeah.
with them collaboratively.
I guess since this is the first situation that we're experiencing, to me, it's, I take it very seriously because we're setting precedent for all future situations like this. So I think, to me, I'd like to know what their thoughts are on it. Yeah, so I guess that's all the questions I have.
Alan, any questions for staff?
Good job, Ellie. Nice work.
Great. I see Lee is queued up to open the presentation.
Lee. Lee Edwards. Hey, there we go. Lee Edwards, DRC Company. No pun intended, but the barn door is already open and the horse got out before I got involved with this. Fortunately, good history with the historic district in Breckenridge, buildings in the historic district, putting them back together. Can I come up?
Speak loudly so you
You could, eh, eh, Lee, since it is online, just grab the mic and just carry it with you.
Don't drop the mic.
You're a mind reader, sir. I'm gonna bring this up a little bit closer. So as you saw in the engineer's letter, we are going to rebuild the shed using modern codes, okay? And then we are going to veneer the outside of the shed with historic material. So looking here at the, can you see this over here? Yes. Okay. Three-quarter inch plywood, which will be structural. Then we will take a piece of one-by material, run it horizontally as if it were rouge sheathing from back in the day. And then we will put the siding up tight against it right here. So you're gonna have a modern structure with historic material on it. All this material comes from French Street, was milled a hundred and thirty years ago, eighteen ninety was a very popular building period. You're gonna be able to see all the old nail holes. We actually saved some in the nails. Excuse me, and we're gonna be putting them back in. So structurally, you won't, the casual observer, other than the fact that it's gonna be straight, square, plumbing, level, able to tell that the building wasn't there. We have the utility locates being done and we have the surveyor coming out this week per the plat to go ahead and pin the property line. So we'll know according to the plat where it was on the property back before it was taken down. Do you have any questions for me?
Thanks, Lee. Appreciate it. Questions for Lee? Mike?
Um, no, nice work, though. The mock-up was quite helpful. Thank you, Lee.
Have the, uh, old drawings and, uh, information to go by.
Any questions for Lee?
Thanks, Lee. This is very helpful.
Um, my question has to do with the roofing. Where is that from?
That's new material. I do have some salvaged material, but unfortunately, it's full of holes. It wouldn't really be good to use.
Uh, yeah, you mentioned utility. I'm just curious, so that, will the applicant be able to get some use out of the shed? Or is that electricity you're putting it, or you're just making sure you're not interfering with any?
Owner would like to bring electricity to the shed. Yes.
Great.
Can I have one more minute?
Sure.
Okay. You brought up a comment
about the historic Breck history.
If you look at the photographs, you'll see this really doesn't have much of a soffit here. There's just a simple board overhang. If you go up and down the alley in Harris Street, between High Street and Harris Street, you're going to see a lot of examples, excuse me, of this type of construction. So we are emulating that, plus it shows up in the photos.
Thanks. Thank you, Lee. I have no questions for the applicant. This is an open public hearing. We will open this for public comment. If you have comments, um, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone, and then star six to unmute yourself.
Uh, we have no one online who wishes to comment.
Do we have anybody in the audience tonight who would wish to comment on this project? With that, we will close public comments. Now we'll move to planning commission comments when, and we also have, uh, three questions to answer. And if we start out with Mike?
Sure. Okay, um, in terms of comments, I'm, I'm quite supportive. The mock-up was very helpful. Question number one, the unapproved demolition, uh, does, do I agree that this should be rebuilt? Yes, absolutely. And in addition to being sort of legally consistent with what Boulder's done, I think from a preservation perspective, this is absolutely the correct thing to do. Uh, additional comments, I truly think the staff was fair and reasonable in resolving this. And, um, uh, let's see, is it ready for final? Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mark.
Thank you for the mock-ups. That was very helpful and very illustrative to everybody. And, um, I do think that the, um, Commission, the staff has, has handled this appropriately with regards to unapproved demolition. I have no further comments. Uh, I think agreeing with Mike's comment, I think it was handled properly. And I think this is ready for final hearing.
Great. Thank you, Mark. Susan?
Thank you. Um, yes, I definitely agree that, uh, rebuilding the historic structure is critical and consistent with code. Um, technically, I guess it's not in the same location because it had been moved, but, um, it, in its last location.
Yes.
Um, and I have no additional comments. Um, I do appreciate the way this has been handled by staff. Um, and I believe it's ready for a final.
Thanks, Susan.
Um, yes, I, thank you. I also agree that it, it, it should be rebuilt as close as possible to the original and, uh, I think with, given the example that we were provided today, I think that will happen as well as, you know, there's numerous other, um, examples up and down, or all throughout town, really. And I think it's definitely ready for the final hearing.
Great. Thanks, Matt. Elaine?
All right, um, I appreciate the that it's being, you're using historical material for the siding and look-alike um, for the, the roof. So I think it's, it meets the code. Um, so I, I agree that it meets the code. I personally do not agree that we should be rebuilding look-alike things, um, which leads me to question two is about, um, unpermitted demolitions. Uh, I think that when someone tears down a historic property or structure in town, that the town should be made given full restitution, and I think a look-alike building is nothing close to full restitution for a community. And, um, so I think I think we need to look into this. I think there should be maybe some additional fees or something, a special fund towards preserving other structures in town or, you know, community service time towards helping preserve them, things like that. I think so that's my suggestion to, um, on the topic. And I think it's ready for final hearing because it meets the code.
Thank you. Alan?
Well, I concur with everyone that I think it's, uh, um, yes, to go ahead with the project and put it in its last original location. Um, uh, one time I thought this, uh, would be to, this would make a nice story, um, when it's all done. Um, not, and, and not to put the applicant on the spot and then they could be, remain anonymous, but maybe some of daily can do a story because it would just provide a cautionary tale for others out there to not do the same thing. Maybe that would address some of your concerns, Elaine. But, uh, you know, maybe when it's all done, um, uh, it would just, uh, people will be aware not to take these old buildings down. Um, and I think it's ready for final.
Great. Thank you, Alan. Um, well, first of all, I'm glad to see that Lee's doing this project. It makes me confident that, um, that we'll have a nice structure and it'll look as good as it can considering what we got. So thank you for that, Lee. As far as the first question, unapproved demolition, um, I do agree that the historic should be rebuilt as close as original possible as directed by the Development Code. Number two, um, I do not have any other comments or questions related to regulations pertaining to the unpermitted historic demolitions. And yes, we are ready for final. Thank you to staff and to the applicant. And with that, Mr. Plan Town Project Hearing, fifty-one Fraction Road, PL twenty twenty-five zero zero three four. And we'll be hearing from Amelia.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Ellie Brackett, planner for the record.
You know, or you could sit awkwardly behind the table we provided for you, if you'd prefer that.
This is fine. Thank you. I'll lower this. Sorry. Okay, so got the site plan sort of slowly coming into view here.
Okay, so we are here at the Town, um, Project Public Hearing for Planning Commission. So this previously went through a work session, uh, just recently with you all a few weeks ago. Then the end of this hearing is a recommendation to Town Council, um, on the project. So that's where we're headed. Um, I'm gonna start with, just because this is our first hearing, public hearing technically on the project, I'm gonna start with a summary of all the elements of the project. So hold on tight for that part of the, of the presentation. Um, and then I'll cover in a little bit more depth what has changed, um, in particular based on some of your comments and recommendations at the last hearing. Um, and then be ready for questions after that. So.
Great.
All right, first of all, uh, all right, here's the fun part. So this area has been master planned and slated for workforce housing since two thousand and seven. All of the other parts of the master plan from two thousand and seven have been developed, so that includes, um, the workforce housing to the north that we'll talk about a little bit. And, uh, this is the last portion of that master plan that's undeveloped. It's currently, uh, skier parking, snow storage and sledding hill. Um, and again, this is, in case I failed to mention, this is, um, a hundred and forty-eight units proposed off of Airport Road just north of Upper Blue Elementary. So that's the location that we're talking about. On the proposed master plan, it's divided into two sections, PAA, Planning Area A, which we'll be talking about mostly tonight, and then PAB. Um, the PAB, I won't talk about too much, but just again, for the record, that's government uses primarily snow storage, um, at this point. That's sort of off there on the north side of the property. All right, so to go through the policies, uh, the land use policies two A and two R, uh, this is currently governed by LED thirty-one for land use and also that master plan. There's no change proposed, um, based on this master plan amendment. For density, three A and three R, again, that's subject to the LED, which is LED thirty-one, and also the master plan, there's no change. This is not above the max. It's actually well below the max. It's allowed under the master plan, um, but it also does include a minimum of a hundred and forty-five units. We talked about it at that work session, try to make sure that, um, the mix of unit types and affordability is maintained and not dip too far below what's proposed currently. In terms of architectural compatibility, five A and five R, uh, the guidance, uh, basically provides, you know, an emphasis on sustainability and workforce housing, that those be prioritized when making design decisions. That's the guidance that's in the master plan. Um, primarily, any other architectural, um, compatibility or design would be governed by the code, something we talked a little bit more in detail, uh, about the work session. However, this is also, um, taking negative points due to the proposal being up to a hundred percent non-natural materials related to affordability and sustainability and also, um, fire prevention. So there's no change from the work session on any of that. Then for six A and six R regarding height, the LED has it at thirty-five feet. There's no change. That would be the maximum for this master plan as well. Regarding site design, seven R, um, as we all know, this is a parking lot, so it's almost entirely flat minus the temporary sledding hill. Um, so it's already disturbed, flat. There's relatively little, um, grading, uh, proposed or would be necessary. And then also, there are no retaining walls in this project. At least so far, but it would be a shock if there were, I think. Um, all right, so snow storage, thirteen A and thirteen R. So everything but Floridora Drive is, um, managed onsite in PAA. So PAB is used for Floridora Drive and then General Town, um, Snow Storage. Um, there, they've shown, the applicants have shown that they can meet the required percentage for snow storage onsite. And then, um, kind of like everything, but in particular with things like snow storage and landscaping, these really are illustrative. Uh, we don't wanna pin ourselves down too much at this point for those things that might conflict later on at future permitting stages. Refuse Plan, fifteen A and fifteen R. So this is, um, something to note. It's not meeting the absolute policy regarding requiring that dump that duplexes of more than three, three or more units, um, have a, a common area for their refuse. Uh, went into a lot more detail here, um, last time, but basically, you know, we do have the ability as a town project to not meet absolute codes, so we do it with caution. And we talked last time about sustainability, that sustainability team reviewed this, thought it was a workable and potentially even a better plan. Uh, because the duplexes, unlike sort of a more standard duplex development, there's interspersed with single-family units. So it's low impact, kind of makes sense, um, from a sort of cleanliness perspective as well. All right, sixteen A and sixteen R is access and circulation. Existing access for the parcel is Fraction Road. There's no change that, that will still be part of the access, although it will be improved. to handle, you know, to look nicer and be a nicer experience and handle potentially a bit more traffic or a different type of traffic. And then there's also Floridora Drive through the property. The access there is in the north and the west. It's an extension of Floridora, which serves the community to the north, the workforce housing. Drive layout is meant to help manage the speed of traffic. And then in addition to the drive, there are alleys and sidewalks. Those provide the rest of the pedestrian and vehicular access throughout the site. And there's also that series of unpaved trails we talked about. All right, we're like two-thirds of the way through. So regarding parking, 18A and 18R, meets all the parking requirements for every different unit type. In addition to that, the potential for ADUs is sort of facilitated here because each lot that can have an ADU also has adequate parking for that ADU. So it's helpful to kind of ease the way for those. And then also the guest parking, and it's noted on the plan, is in addition to the requirements for the units. And that guest parking, just to confirm, we'll talk about this briefly a little bit, but it is, it is open to public as well. All right, so recreation, 20R. The project is proposed to have positive points here for providing access points to recreation amenities off-site and then also providing some internal amenities for residents. That's plus three. 21R, open space, meets the percentage requirements. It's over 30%, and that does not include the yard space. Landscaping, 22A and 22R. Again, this is similar to the snow storage and infrastructure will be addressed at a future permit stage. But just to note, you know, this is getting a little bit into discussion and comments, but staff did look into a potential for additional buffering, the view from Highway Nine of the development. And we do have some, some illustrations to show kind of what it would really look like for most of the year, or at least part of the year. But because of the easements that are on that side, it makes it pretty difficult to have, you know, full-blown trees and denser landscaping. So just to note, we did kind of kick the tire on that a little bit more. And it's, it's tough to provide more buffering. But again, this would all be subject to the code landscaping review in the future. All right, so 24R, social, social community. So here we have positive 10 points, given that this is 100% deed restricted workforce housing. And also positive six for meeting the council goal of providing workforce housing. So that would be a total of positive 16 proposed under 24R. And then finally, here in this part of the presentation, fences, 47A. So the screening fence, there is a screening fence proposed for PAB, just basically to make it so that, you know, you don't have to see some of that dirty snow and sort of other government uses, so to speak, but, you know, public works uses, uses. And then there are also optional fences, really meant to help with corralling kids and dogs and just sort of delineating your property boundaries that are an option for residents on single-family and duplex homes. There is an additional design I'll talk about in a second, but otherwise it hasn't really changed. They're predominantly open, meeting that solid void ratio that's in the code. Okay, so a few things have changed based on your comments and based on other staff reviews. So thank you very much for those. The main one is regarding the placement of structures. So I'm going to pull up the standards here. Within the development standards, we have a lot of information in here, but we talk about setbacks. Couple of big changes, one for clarity and then one for really functionality. So with the comments last, during the work session about making sure that this would be fair if somebody were coming in for an addition, went ahead and made the side setback seven and a half feet for everybody. So that's, meets the building separation minimum that we want to see, you know, for grading purposes, but also makes it so that like if you get there first, you can, you know, you can't sort of steal from your neighbor, so to speak. And then there are, you know, if you look at the site plan, there are some instances in which there are properties that are rear to side. We also added some language saying if there is a rear and a side yard of budding, those would also both become seven and a half, again, to help with that issue. The other big change here, or rather clarification, is on town home setbacks. So last time, you know, I think, I don't remember exactly how it was written out, if it had any, or how it looked, but we kind of looked at it again and wanted to make sure that, you know, this would be something that in the future, you know, heaven forbid, but if there were a fire or something, it would be relatively easy to, to administer. And also, this is a phased project, right? So being specific about these types of things is, will help us down the road when these things get developed, you know, a few years from now. And so with that in mind, staff is, and the applicant are proposing having the town homes be defined by the perimeter boundary. So I can ask more, I can answer questions about this if you have them, but I won't get super detailed. But basically, that allows for a little bit more flexibility on the placement because the town home placements vary quite a bit. So we think this is a functional proposal to say, hey, it's basically achieving the same thing, but without being so convoluted that you don't really know what it says. However, one of the implications of writing it this way is that there is a town home corner that will hit about two feet below. It still meets the absolute requirement of 10 feet, but it's 13 feet instead of the, whatever the other one's called. What's the R stand for? Relative, thank you. The, for some reason, relaxed came into my mind just then. But the relative policy of 15 feet. And so to make this work, we need to take those points. Let's see, I think that's all for the, for the development standards. A few other things to note. So the e-bike locations were added to the exhibit, just so you could see kind of where those might end up. Also took a look at sheds. So we did add language that says no sheds are allowed in front yards. Also kicked the tires on trying to make that more specific for rear yards. However, kind of where we came from as staff was, what I mean by that is saying within a rear yard, they have to be within three feet or 10 feet or something of the primary structure, just to kind of make them even more regulated. However, when we were looking at that, because of the diversity of types and especially attached versus detached garage and the duplexes, doing anything more, we kind of thought would preclude having a shed for a lot of properties. And so we kind of left it at, don't put them in the front yard, but then otherwise they'll just be ruled by the setbacks of three feet on the side and 10 feet on the rear. And then, I'll just note, architectural design standards include prioritizing workforce housing in addition to sustainability. We did change split rail fencing to timber railing, just to make sure we were saying the right thing. And then I'll also note that the applicant is proposing to add a, an option for a solid design for any properties that are but open space. So these would be those optional fences, but that was in response to some of the concerns about screening into yards and being able to see, you know, what, all the mess that people have got back there. Just a couple of notes. So I kind of already touched on this, but, you know, staff did look into additional screening options for landscaping. Did it make sense to put those in the master plan? Was it possible? The easements kind of make that pretty difficult, but certainly something we'll evaluate again during the permitting phase. And then parking, it came up, you know, is there adequate public parking, access to the river? And did just make sure that those guest parking spots are public. And then also, you know, looked at the, there's a parking lot to the north and some other parking improvements along Floridora that are off property. But staff thinks probably makes sense to extend those a little bit further south to provide more public parking. However, they're not on this actual property. And so we didn't include them as an update to the master plan, but something that we've noted. And then finally, you know, there was a discussion last time about adding units currently, proposal for units on the Planning Area B. Staff also worked with housing to try to figure out, you know, does that make sense? And I think my understanding, and I don't have the depth of knowledge that the Housing Department certainly does, but my understanding is, you know, this is really an issue of making sure that these are things that can be affordable price points and that adding that infrastructure at this point is something that they investigated, but doesn't, doesn't sort of really pencil out at this point. So, those are all the changes. A quick summary of a point analysis, and then be ready for questions. So where we stand is positive three for recreational connections and amenities, positive 10 for 100% deed restricted, positive six for meeting council goal of workforce housing that puts the project at plus 19. And then we get to negative six for 100% non-natural materials, negative three for where setback, I've written this sort of strangely, but that's where the setback is, 13 feet instead of 15, so not meeting that relative policy. And so that negative point total is negative nine, and that leaves us with a positive evaluation of 10. So I'm happy to answer any questions. And then the applicant also has a presentation, which I have queued up for you all.
Thank you, Amelia. Great presentation. Before we move any further, I need to, once again, disclose that the developer on this project is my ex-wife and ex-business partner. However, I do not have any financial interest in this project at all and see no reason to recuse myself. If anybody wishes to dispute that, please speak down or ever hold your peace. No? Good? Great. We'll move on. We'll move on to questions for staff. Matt, would you like to start us off?
Sure. Nice presentation. I, I don't have any questions at this point.
Great. Thank you, Matt. Elaine?
Thanks for addressing the things that were brought up. I have no further questions.
Elaine?
Um, Amelia, I, no, I don't have a question. I'll save it for a comment.
Thanks. Great. Susan?
Two small points. And I don't mean to be overly picky. I appreciate the responsiveness to my suggestion on e-bikes, but I looked in, I didn't see the locations noted.
I think I checked this earlier. I think they're in there. Let's open it up here. It's the first one. Thank you. Yeah, so they, it took me a second to, they're kind of, you guys can jump in if you want, but I know I saw them before. Oh, is it these guys right here?
The, the star or asterisk. So at the top there, it says proposed possible e-bike locations. So one in the middle at the park, one by the bus stop that's to the north, and then one to the south, kind of closest to where you would turn to go to the school.
Right. I appreciate it. Thanks for pointing that out. And then, one other small point for you, Amelia. You say that the total passing point analysis is plus 10, but in your suggested motion, you say point 13, plus 13.
Check. I think 10 is right, though. So I'll check for you while you guys are discussing, just to make sure you're right, right point number. Got to get the number right.
That's all I had.
Thank you, Susan. Mark, any questions for staff?
Yes. I appreciate the clarification of the side yard setbacks. Having said that, I think that what you've done with the sheds just further confuses the issue. To say that there's no sheds in the, in the front yard says to me that you can put it in either of the side yards and anywhere in the rear yard, as long as you abide by the setbacks. So if we go back to the side yard, if somebody wants to put a shed in the side yard, then I'm assuming that that means that the shed cannot extend further than the five, than the 7.5 feet on either side.
Cannot extend further? Do you mean that it's subject to that seven and a half setback?
Saying that if you've got 7.5 on either side and they want to put a shed there, the house is going to have to be that much smaller to accommodate whatever the width of the shed is. So if they've only got two foot, feet, they can have a two-foot shed. If they got 12 inches, they can have a 12-inch shed. And, and I'm just, I, I think that you further confuse that by not specifically saying where you can put a shed in the side yard and what the limitations are. I'm used to seeing requirements that say any accessory structure, shed, whatever, garage, whatever, needs to be in the rear yard. And then you define what the rear yard is. Where does the rear yard start? Does it start at the back of the building? Does it start halfway up on the building? What is the definition of the rear yard in Breckenridge? And how does that determine where the accessory building, we're calling a shed, is in this particular subdivision? And I think you need to clarify that.
I, I guess, I don't know, I guess, you know, looking at other areas of town where we don't have that, or even looking at the historic district, where we don't allow sheds in the front yard, but really anywhere else is fair game and was, you know, you look to like the settlement pattern that you typically have. But you're probably correct that there'll be a lot of instances where a home will take up almost all the setbacks. So it would preclude from any kind of shed from being built, or I don't think the scenario of having a one-foot wide shed or even a three-foot wide shed, for that matter, is very realistic. So I think, without specifically saying it, that almost exclusively sheds would be located in, in the backyard. But, I mean, we, as a group, including the design team as well as numerous staff, we, we looked at it, but for the reasons that Amelia said, if we were to be so specific in terms of where you can locate a shed in the backyard and really nail down the criteria, then we'd eliminate probably over half of the properties in the future from having the, the ability to have a shed.
Yes.
I think without saying it, you know, I mean, I guess someone could build like a tack-on, like a broom closet or something to their home. But I'm not sure that we'd even be that against if it was integrated into the structure and they want, someone wanted to have snow shovels or something like that. It was a real minimal.
I think it really depends on the aesthetic that you want. Do you want to go down the street and see these bump outs that people have put on to the side of the house after the fact? And what that does to the aesthetics of the neighborhood or not? And if you don't want that, then say that they have to be in the rear yard.
I don't think that, I don't, I don't think that we, I don't think that we, I guess, obviously that you think that would be an issue. I think us as staff, looking at that, that is something we're not concerned about. If someone were to design something tastefully and have a little bump out and match the siding, we don't think that's necessarily a bad design feature. An HOA later in the future that maybe gets into the further nuances, maybe that would be an issue, similar to how the Wellington neighborhood has, you know, a whole other layer of design review beyond the towns, but the, to, I guess, plan for every kind of what-if scenario, I don't think is what the intent of this master plan is.
Okay. I'm just trying to point out problems that I've seen in other areas over the years that I've been doing this. And it's a lot cleaner to second, the sheds just go in the back and in the rear yard.
Yeah, I, I guess, coming from, one of the first things I did as a staff member is had to go through the Wellington and, and work with a lot of property owners that had unpermitted sheds and find areas where they could bring it on and actually comply with, with the master plan. And essentially, I had to create like a building envelope for them to say, these are the areas. And, and having spent, you know, several years going through that exercise and, and I guess the knowledge I learned from that, I, I think what we have proposed is maybe a more workable solution to owners in the future. And, and give them more options, but, you know, still allows for a tasteful aesthetic of sheds that would match, you know, the aesthetics of, of the property. And, you know, we're not sure that sheds will be as necessary as they are for some of the properties in the Wellington, but that was something that, you know, people really did appreciate having a little extra space for bicycles and snow blowers and other things that otherwise would just be outside, quite frankly, and look more unsightly.
So circling back, am I correct to say that whatever shed they put on is still going to need to respect the side setback of seven and a half on both sides?
No, so it's, it's written that the shed setbacks are three feet, that they're lesser than the side.
Okay, so they can encroach one and a half feet on that seven and a half foot side setback. Question I have is about PAB. I don't understand the priorities of the town. We're doing workforce housing. It's supposed to be affordable. And what I'm hearing from the nation of whomever is that snow storage seems to be more of a priority than making that, that's a big, big piece of, of ground right there, making that available in the future for workforce housing. And frankly, I, I know from watching these kind of things in the, in the past that if the infrastructure doesn't go in now, these things are never going to get built, and that's going to be vacant property for forever. And I, I have a real big problem. And I have such a big problem with that, that I'm not going to be able to support. And I have such a big problem with that, that I'm not going to be able to support this, this project moving forward with that piece of ground as snow storage. It's my understanding that, that the town has snow storage now somewhere on the McCain property. So to me, this is really a non-issue of somebody being stubborn about this, this property. And I think that workforce housing is a priority over snow storage. So again, I'm not going to support this moving forward.
Okay. Um, yeah, feel free to make that, that statement at the comment section. But just to remind everyone, right now we're in, uh, questions for, for staff before the applicant has a, a chance to present.
Well, I did ask a question about why the snow storage is a priority over. So I, I would like somebody from the town to address that because I have asked that question.
So I, I, I think we can, we can reiterate, but we'll probably wait and reserve, um, for the applicant. Even though it is kind of, here's the, the town is both the reviewer and the applicant in this situation, but there is a, a division, um, where, where we represent the, the review portion and the housing side represents the, the applicant portion and the, the views of the town. So, um, not to dump that on Lori, but we'll, we'll probably have, um, that side take a stab at, at restating the, the town's position.
To just say, I know this was covered in our last meeting, but, um, but in a preface to that, that it's, it certainly is a, we've had, we basically rehad all the conversations that we had had previous to work set, to the last work session, based on your comments, including with engineering, with housing, with planning. And so this, it's, it's the same conversation and the same outcome, which was, it's a combination. And I think absolutely housing can speak better to that portion of it and also that this is limiting snow storage. So it's sort of like a, a multifaceted piece. Um, so I know that doesn't satisfy the, the question, but just to say, we did re have all the conversations to try to emphasize like, is this real that we, we, we are where we are with the infrastructure specifically to your question about putting it in now? So whatever that's worth.
Thank you, Mark. Duly noted your comments. Questions for staff? No questions? I have no questions for staff. Thank you very much, Amelia. The applicant?
Thank you, Amelia. Good evening, Commissioners. Lindsay Newman with Norris Design. And I'm joined by my lovely team here. We've got Tori Idala with Norris Design as well and Suzanne. Alan Guerra, Alan, sorry, I screw this up every time. My accent. We already went over that, actually, before you got here. Alan Sabo with Neighborhood Crafters. I'll get it, I'll get it right by the end of this. Um, we also have Tim Sabo here, who is representing the architecture side of things as well. So, um, yeah, we don't, we, I think Amelia did a really great job covering the revisions that we made. And I have a short list here of those items. And you know, with this master plan process, we're really looking to create, um, the guidelines for this neighborhood within which we can still be flexible and we still have the opportunity to, um, make sure that residents can make these their own while staying within those guidelines. So, um, a certain level of flexibility here. And with P A B, we do wanna make sure that it's noted that we do have workforce housing as a use. And I hear what you're saying, Mark, and that's not my purview to answer, and we'll get to that. But we, it is a use in the future because we do understand the value of being able to keep that piece of land flexible moving forward. So in terms of sheds, I feel like we hit that pretty hard. And if you wanna go to the next slide, we, we know where we are. We've talked about that. You can go over to the site plan there. Yeah. So, um, with, we do have those seven and a half foot setbacks. And I feel like we've hit that pretty hard, but, um, maintaining a three-foot setback for sheds on the sides so that people can have that livability aspect of being able to have some of those elements and not have them just kind of clutter up the neighborhood too much and keep them out of the snow and be a little bit more usable. Um, I think that that was important, just keeping, like, having the intent to keep them really close to that primary structure while still allowing people to have them on these, you know, fairly efficient lots. On the fencing, let's see if you go to the next slide. We just sho- we're just showing a couple of pictures in the master plan. It's a black and white detail, but we just wanted to give a little more character to what these fences will be like. So we have an open timber rail fence that has the optional wire mesh if you have children or pets that you would like to keep in your yard. And then something that's a little bit more solid with optional wire mesh on that as well. Um, and the idea is that the solid, the more solid fence would be facing the open space so that you're kind of creating more of a barrier from some of the more publicly used area, park areas, while not necessarily limiting some of the front porch feel, um, that the town of Breckenridge likes to see in their historic district and having that neighborhood interaction. So trying to balance that while still, um, understanding what we heard in the last meeting about being able to screen people's elements. And I think that's also where the sheds come into play. We were just kind of discussing that. And then I think the next slide is our view. I had technical weirdness. Actually, I wanted to mention quickly, we did add a little bit more guest parking following our last meeting. On the, the northern, so phase one, on the west side, we have four additional guest spaces marked in red. And then on the south side, we have some additional tandem parking spaces for, um, some of the homes there. So we are squeezing out every parking space we can on this site as well, um, to make sure that it's livable and that families and their friends can come over and visit. So of course that changed the snow storage ever so slightly, and that's all, um, picked up in the master plan as well. And then we heard the comment to see, what, what does this look like from the highway? Um, so this is the site modeled up as you drive south into town um, with all of the existing trees that are along the Blue River. You can see that it's really, you know, not really, not super in your face. And it's kind of setback from the road a bit, especially with those easements that help provide that, that separation. While we can't plant a lot in there, we can do some plantings around the buildings and those envelopes on the lots. With that, we will take questions or comments if there's anything Suzanne or Tori would like to add before we go to questions. Okay.
Great. Thank you so much. Alan, would you like to start us off with questions for the applicant?
Let's see. Um, no questions.
Thank you. Elaine?
I have no questions too.
Uh, just one like, and maybe it's too early, but the, uh, the public parking, will it be signed like for guests of this neighborhood only, or will it just be open parking? Cause I know like when I go to the Wellington, it's like guests, for guests of the Wellington neighborhood only, and it's kind of somewhat intimidating. And then like, but, uh, like i- if, if this is like for recreation access as well, this public parking?
Yeah. I mean, I think, I think it's to be a, we'll, we'll have to work on that, uh, work on that. Um, I, I think, you know, your comment did resonate with a lot of people, just in terms of like you, you know, have a pretty expansive open parking, particularly for the, the fishermen where, you know, walking a long distance is not part of the activity. And so having a variety of kind of pods of parking and also I think understanding, um, not that it's only for fishermen, but understanding that, to your point, I think that is an important use. And also that the overall numbers of fishermen aren't such where there'll be under people buying for spots. So I, I think, I think it's the intent to have some flexibility for, um, you know, recreational access along the river there. And, um, and, and we'll, we'll make a good faith effort to try and capture that moving forward, I think, with the, the management.
Summer, couldn't they park on the snow stack?
Um, I'm, I'm not sure without talking to public works, but you know, I think that's something ongoing as we go to the build out. Is that, is the, I think that's the, the intent is to accommodate them.
Thanks, Matt. Susan, questions for the applicant?
No questions.
Mark, questions? Thanks, Mark. Mike, questions for the applicant?
Did you look at, uh, the renderings were helpful, but did you consider a rendering that was, uh, 90 degrees at the center of the, um, development? Where you proposed the, um, in your landscape plan, the, the sort of triangular sliver of trees?
So we did not, only because Norris didn't want us to show the, the park at this point because it's not designed yet really. It's just sort of like open space, um, yeah, on the, on the drawings. And they didn't want us to get shoehorned into something. So they didn't want me to design their park for them.
Right. Yeah. I guess what Suzanne's saying is at this stage, we had, for the master plan, while we are working on designs for the park and the landscape for the future, um, we, for the master plan, where it's all very conceptual. Landscapes conceptual. I mean, even the snow storage, like they're exhibits that, you know, could shift and change as we go forward. So it's not that specific. It's more just to give you an idea of what it's gonna feel like from a, from, you know, the, the thousand-foot view of the master plan level.
But the buildings and stuff just so you know are taken from our model. So they're the right scale. They're like, that's real.
And Mike, just to, just because I'm currently reviewing landscape plans, cause we're working on a bid for Suzanne, um, I can kind of clarify for you about where trees currently really are. And we are putting them in those lots along there, right on the other side of the easement where we're, where we can put them. And, and yeah, but let's go back to the site plan. Oh, sorry. Yeah, sorry. You don't have, can we go back to the site plan? Yeah. So I, obviously this is just, um, very conceptual, but on the front of, you know, the front elevation of the architecture, so that side lot that's facing the river, we are gonna be able to fit some trees within those lots. Obviously, we can't put them in the easement. We are going to be able to fit some trees within that triangle. We are, we are fitting quite a few trees within the park. We're also going to be able to fit some taller shrubs at kind of like the end of the park to kind of hug that space. So, um, yeah, we are definitely thinking about and considering screening, um, while we're placing trees.
Fair enough. Um, I don't see that in your narrative on the landscape. Um, I don't see that in, anywhere in the master plan. I didn't see that captured in the minutes that I spoke to last time. So help me understand why we don't wanna codify these trees as screening the center of the development from, um, the view shed from Highway nine.
I guess we were, we were actually given the angle from Highway nine of what we, they wanted to see. So that's.
He's just saying somehow.
Oh.
That, that there would be screening.
We can absolute, we can absolutely add it. Absolutely.
Yeah. So.
Chris, can you speak to that? I mean, you're, you're.
I think in the past, we've learned that if we get too specific at the, at the master plan level for like laying out trees, we've run into other things in terms of grading and utilities and everything else. Like, um, I think across the street from the, the Soul Center is a perfect example of that. In the, in the landscape plan for that, we have a street, you know, row of street trees that were planned without taking into account that there also needs to be, uh, um, you know, drainage improvements within a very narrow corridor. And I, I think we want, before we promise something, we wanna make sure that, you know, our civil plans are talking with our landscape, architecture plans, and that, that's just one example. So, um, and I, I think to a lesser extent, some of the things we learned too is, you know, on the site plan, it looks prettier when they have a bunch of green trees, but I think using the Wellington neighborhood as an example, if you look at the early greens, they were really heavily planted. And now as they've become mature, they essentially have a forest in the middle of those greens. And one of, I think some of the earliest feedback for that neighborhood was the people actually preferred having a little bit more of an open green where, where kids would go out and play and other things versus having kind of a forest in front of their, their home. So if you, if you look at the greens from phase one of Wellington to phase two, you'll notice that there's a lot, um, less dense of trees planted. And that was a, as a direct, um, direct result of the feedback we had from the, the first inhabitants that moved into Wellington.
That's a really good point, Chris. And, you know, there is actually a drainage pond that's kind of near, I guess, closer to the cottage that's in the wider portion of that triangle that we, you know, we won't be able to plant in the bottom of, but can plant around. So yes, we don't have everything in the master plan level to promise the, an exact number of trees. So we don't wanna get super specific or shoehorned into something that we don't know all the details on.
I mean, I, I think to a certain extent, any landscaping plan, there's a bit of field fitting. It really being the last thing it goes in with a, a project and trying to, you know, here's the general concept. Here's the kind of minimum quantities that we wanna hit, but that's, once we see how it's unfolding, let's let the, um, you know, the landscape architects in conjunction with the landscape crew, you know, kind of cite the larger landscaping appropriately.
Um, okay. So what I'm hearing is we may not technically be able to do so because of utilities or, uh, something like that. That we may not want to do so because it's, we want an open play area. And, um, certainly I understand the difference between the master plan and a, you know, a site plan. Your answer helped. Uh, I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mike.
And I think that, um, just to further, not to, to belabor it, but I, I think it's probably a, a continuation, I would even say an enhancement over what we've seen already in block 11. I think the, the level of landscaping we're shooting for is probably, I think, a little higher, but at a bare minimum, consistent with what we've already seen. So I, I mean, maybe using it as a benchmark, if you think that, you know, there, there's generally room for improvement, that's something that we could take into account, like, you know, ba- based off of that project, if you could do this to improve with the full build out, I think that would be helpful feedback.
Sure. Appreciate that. And thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mike. I have no questions for the applicant. And, uh, so thank you. With that, this being a public hearing, I'll open it up for public comment. Please keep in mind, if you are commenting, keep your comments to three minutes. With that said, we'll start with anybody online. If you are online and wish to comment, please raise your hand with the icon at the bottom of your screen or press star nine if you're attending the meeting by phone and then star six to unmute yourself.
It's erased.
Okay. Anybody in the audience wish to comment?
Yes. Lee Edwards, 181810 Snow Alley, Airport Road, excuse me, Airport Road, Snow Alley. We are just to the west of the area where the snow stacking is, uh, the building to the south of where the snow stacking is as well in that big parking lot. Um, quickly, cause there's only three minutes, remind me, Chris, of the upper blue S A P count as employee housing. Is this a one-to-one?
Th- this is a one-to-one density transfer. The town has to transfer, um, density. And per the, um, actually the code update, the, the joint upper blue, I believe, actually has a one-to-two. But within the town, we actually have a higher level of a one-to-one.
Much. Who's going to own the land underneath the buildings when this is all done?
Yeah. So the, the properties themselves are, are for sale, like the, in sort of footprint lots effectively is how they work. Yeah.
Um, and you mentioned an O H O A. Is there one H O A or are there individual neighborhoods within the property?
My understanding is there'd be one H O A. I think that's how we've done it in the past. Oh, and, but separate for the townhomes.
Thank you. Separate for the townhomes?
Yes.
Okay. How wide are the alleys that are providing the access to the properties along the river?
I can look that up. I don't know off the top of my head and I'm not, go ahead.
It's actually a public comment session. It's not a, it's not a question.
It's not a question. Okay. All right. It's a public comment. Okay. Where's the easement that comes from the Iowa Hill plant, sewer plant in relation to this site plan?
That be a question, Lee?
It's a comment because I wanna make sure it's not in our, under any of the footprints. What's the difference between a comment and a question if you wanna know something?
I, I think you can comment relative to your review and, and code-related issues in terms of, yeah, independent review for one commenter. That's, that's generally not what we're.
All my comments are going to be questions then. There was an article in the paper stating that this might be.
Let me, let me further. I think we can pull up to kind of illustrate where the easements are, but, uh, And carefully considered in, in the placement and alignment of the, the. The illustrated lots and structures.
Okay, then we can assume they're not under the buildings. There was an article in the newspaper that they may be cut, the town may be looking at phasing. We're cutting back on the number of units to be built. Where does the property start development?
Again, Lee, this is, these are, this is open for comments. I think that if you have these type of questions, you can go to staff. During business hours and, and get those questions answered.
During a work session, is it appropriate to ask questions?
This is a town project hearing.
I am asking as a citizen of the community, an adjacent property owner, where is the proper place to ask questions?
You can ask questions as, as Ethan directed, or write comments if you're concerned about the placement. Of the structures or you have issues related to the development code.
I think that's appropriate, Lee. You can go into and ask Amelia, uh, these questions. During. Business hours.
Yes, you are correct. How does the planning commission get to hear some of the questions slash comments that the public makes if not at this podium? During a presentation?
Well, I, I think, I, I guess advice from staff would be to come prepared and having reviewed. The plans and, and work with staff and then have a list of comments that, uh, that are code based, that the commission can consider.
Thank you, Lee. Does anybody else in the public have, uh, comments at this time? With that, we'll close the public comment. Area and, um. Move to commissioner comments, and then we will have a motion. What's that? Did Lori wish to? Sure. Come on up, Lori. Thanks.
From your mic, but, um, you know, I don't know that, um, Mark will like, like my answer. But basically, you know, we've been working with the council on this site for. A year and a half or so now, and, um, obviously, our first iterations, um. Had a lot more density on this. Um, and I think we've got to a, um. Reasonable, efficient use of the property that the council feels meets what they want this to be, which is. A, a, a neighborhood, um. And, and not as dense as we might have wanted, coming from the planning perspective. But in regard to the snow stack area, um, you know, we've heard loud and clear from the town manager that. We absolutely need to make sure that we're respecting, um. The sort of wishes that have been put forth by Public Works in terms of what they feel they need. And I think if they look at block eleven and Blue fifty-two, um, all the way, um, up Floridora. Back to Airport Road, um, you know, they intend to use this location to assist with plowing. That whole stretch of workforce housing and, um. Anytime we make a, uh, any effort to sort of either reduce that or talk about a day when that might not be snow storage. Um, it's really not something that they're open to hearing. And so I know that, um. The project planner on this, Melanie, did sort of look at the cost to just bring utilities in. And, and the council is just not at a point where they're going to approve any further increase on our subsidy. Um, what, what they're doing in terms of the subsidy that we're having to put into this project is they're focusing that on. Providing, um, a lower price point for the units so we can really actually get some. Some for sale opportunities that I think our community is going to appreciate because it is affordable and accessible. To, um, a lot of the folks in here that are looking to buy houses and just have not been able to get into any of the other for sale projects. So. They're focusing the town's support on getting these units more affordable and. Adding infrastructure that someday may support more housing is just not something we can add to the plate right now. But that's the response. I know it's not going to get you happy, but, um. Uh, that's just a perspective from the housing department and our coordination with council and town management. That's really all I had to say. We appreciate your review. This was super excited about this project. Uh, you know. The need is there. Um, we have, uh, people that are working in our communities that are desperate to get into for sale. We're desperate to get people out of rental into for sale, um, so that they can, you know, what we consider thrive in our community. As opposed to just surviving homeownership is such a key component of that. So that's why this project is so important to us. Thanks for your, um, review.
Thank you, Lori. Lee?
Formed on a comment versus a question. May I make two quick comments, please?
Please.
Okay. The plan should reflect the underground utilities that have already been put in place. And take those into account so we didn't just flush that money down the toilet. And the plan should take into account. The fairly extensive landscaping we did thirty years ago behind Snow Alley and not just wipe it out for the sake of putting in an alley. Thank you.
With that, we'll move to commissioner comments, and then we'll have a motion. Mike, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Chair. Um, I think this is a really well crafted master plan. I think that the entrance off Fraction Road and the alley, um, and the Central Park and the view shed over the Blue River. Um, is really handsome design. I like how Floridora Drive winds through the site. The, there's density, but at the same time, um, I think there's a good balance, uh, in the sizes of the lots. And the view sheds from the lots. I applaud the solar orientation of all of the homes. Uh, this is a really good master plan, and I appreciate the design team and staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Mark, any comments?
Yes. Like, my comment in response to Lori's explanation, um, is that I, I. Continue to be frustrated to understand exactly what the town's priorities are. We have workforce housing, but in this particular situation, uh, we, we have a priority of net zero. And we have a priority of snow storage, which are, in my opinion, trumping some of the ability to. Deal with the issue of people having places to live. And while I appreciate the town council struggling with what the budget is here. If, if I look at, and, and, and I don't know, I've heard numbers between forty and sixty thousand for. Net zero. Um, if you take that times a hundred and forty-eight units, that's seven point four million dollars we're talking about right there. It's, it's just, I, I struggle to really understand. The priorities are, and, and that's what I struggle with, with regards to this project. Having said that, uh, there's so many good things about this project. I think that it is a very nice design. I think it will warrant a very nice result in terms of the community. Where people live, um, and I like it from that standpoint, but I still have a problem with. The, um, town deciding that they want to hold that much of the ground out for. Some future use, which may or may not be workforce housing.
No, I'm pleased with the project. Um, I think that, uh, I, I would like it. I wish it was providing more opportunity for those who want to buy into the community, but. Um, I do think it's very nicely done. And, uh, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great looking neighborhood. Um. Like I said last time, riverfront and Breck. Wow, it's awesome. So, uh, no. Love the design. Thanks.
Thanks, man. Lane?
I thank you all in, in the town too, because I think this is an excellent project. I wish I could grow up in a neighborhood like this. Um, I just think our community needs housing for teachers. Firefighters, nurses, so many important, critical, um, employees that come here with great hopes of staying. And then they find they can't. So I think this is a really nice balance. Um, certainly, there's challenges with. Snow storage and access, but I think as a community, we have to balance those things, and I think there's a huge need for this. So I'm glad you all. And thanks for the wonderful design.
Thank you, Elaine. Alan, comments?
Yeah, I got a few. Um. One just experience from Wellington. You, you don't seem to have, you don't have the kind of greens we have in Wellington. Where there are two homes facing each other on a green, but you had, um, commented, you had shown about fencing for the fronts of homes. And we have some greens where no one has fences in front of their homes and some where they do. With the ones where everyone has a fence in front, it actually seems to defeat the purpose of the green that closes off every yard. And, you know, having the front porch accessible to the green kind of just encourages more community. You know, kids running up on others' porches, the dogs running up and stuff, particularly my dog does that too often, but. It's, uh, I just think you might want to reconsider how that would look and whether you want to foster more community or not. Actually, I have a question for my fellow commissioner, Mike. Are you concerned about screening the highway away from the neighborhood? Or hiding the neighborhood from the highway?
Both.
Because I actually think this, from the highway, this is a lot better than what's there now. Yeah. I, I also would suggest maybe, um, for considering relocating some of the guest parking. To the north end where it curves into the Floridora neighborhood, because that would be easily, more readily accessible to guests coming to fish. And it, without having to traverse the whole neighborhood.
I'll bet it gets used that way.
When you're fishing. One solution to the guest parking for residents versus people coming to fish is just say. It's guest parking during the day, but overnight parking and the guest is only for guests of residents. That would solve that issue. Bit to think about. I know this is probably way too far to, but staging. I assume that the free parking in, which seems to be moving to McCain will be built. Before you start any work here. But I think the town, and this is more for staff, the town and Vale Resorts. Will really need a very extensive communication plan for guests that are used to using, uh, the parking here. Because people will be pulling into your construction site looking to park. And so I, I think that's really, uh, a to do for the town and, and for Vale Resorts and all their communications. For whatever season that that parking will no longer be available. Um, and last is that I concur with my fellow commissioner, Mark, these. That I wonder if the cost of net zero compliance, that I know there's significant additional costs. And perhaps since the town is struggling or thinking about how they're going to finance this, perhaps relaxing that requirement. Um, will enable them to go ahead with this full project. Uh, I also have not heard of any audits of our completed net zero homes to see if they're truly reaching that goal. So it might be, I, I encourage again, and whoever's listening from town council to reconsider that. That's all I got.
Except respectfully. In regards to Mark's comments, um, on PAB. I pretty much echo all my other commissioners' comments and, and, and stating too that I think this is a great project. I think you guys have done a lot of great work, um, on the master plan and, and it looks, looks really good, and I, I applaud you. And thank you. So.
Chair, I move the planning commission recommend approval to the town council of the runway master plan, PL twenty twenty-five zero zero three four. Located at fifty-one Fraction Road with a passing point analysis of positive thirteen points.
Is it thirteen?
It's ten.
And attention. Under the development codes relative policies and meeting all absolute policies except nine dash one dash nineteen fifteen A. Refuse and recycling with the attached findings and conditions of approval.
Second.
Uh, Miss Gort. Proper. Mr. Smith. Mr. Gara. Mr. Lees.
Oh.
Mr. Fractor.
Yes.
Mr. Geller.
That will move on to, uh, the council summary, and Mark has arrived for that.
Thanks, guys. Sorry I was running late. Um, I was in that meeting with Senator Hickon Looper over at the Soul Center. And Mike was at the first part of that, getting the show off the building, and then we, uh. And then we also looked at, uh, Vista Verity one and two housing projects, and then had a sit down in the water plant for, uh. An hour to just answer questions and share more information with him about how valuable both the, um. Both the Soul Center with Building Hope and FERC are to the community along with the accompanying housing there. So. Um, it was really great to, uh, share that with Senator Hickam Looper. So, um. Alan, we, just following up on a comment you just made, um, we did just recently get our first audit. On the net zero out at, uh, Vista Verity one, and, um. It apparently is performing as expected. So, um, I'll try to get more details. When I do, I'll try to remember to.
Okay.
To share that with you, but, uh, yeah, so we've been asking for a while, so we're excited to see that.
I'd like to see for, it'd be interesting to see if it works for standalone houses. You know, with four walls and.
Well, it's interesting in stables is actually we are getting, um, hers ratings that are in the negatives. And means it's. Basically producing more energy than it's creating, so, or, um, using. So, anyway, um, yeah, at the town council meeting. Wasn't a whole lot of planning issues on the agenda, um, but we did, um. They did, uh, extend the. Three mile plan, which is every year we have to identify an area that we could potentially annex property within. And we have to place it all in the land use district. If it's not in the land use district, you can't annex it. And so, um, and, you know, that's, as you guys know, is basically equivalent to our zoning. So anyway, um, that was adopted again by the council, something we try to do every year. Probably the, uh, the, the big, uh, long discussion was on, not that long, but on Summit County safe passages. And that's a proposal to build some overpasses and underpasses on I seventy. To allow wildlife to flow through. And where that, you know, and, um. So, um, if you've seen the Highway nine project up by, on the way to Kremlin and that. It's been hugely successful in reducing the amount of, of vehicular incidents with, um, animals. Like, I think it's reduced it by like ninety-five percent. So, um, you know, it's been super successful. And, um, they're trying, and they, and so this group, um. Is trying to make the same thing happen here, and they've done a bunch of fundraising, raised about three million dollars so far. Um, and have approached the town about participating. Now, you know, what's the connection to the town? Well, a couple of things. One is. Honestly, those herds, um, um, that are using the Vale Pass area and that whole area between Copper and Vale. Are not that far removed from here, and they can go over to the ten mile range. And, um, it's only about five miles as a crow flies. Um, if you look at the distances. You know, it's steep topography, obviously. But, um, anyway, there's that connection. And then they're also looking at, in the future. There may be some things in the Breck area that they'd want to do, like in the Blue River area, and maybe to the north even to. You know, supplement, um, that little bridge that we have up there at Four Mile Bridge. Um, so there, there's definitely reasons to support the project. Um, Bosak had made a recommendation to support a hundred and fifty thousand dollar contribution. The council was hesitant, not that they didn't want to support the project, but they're just worried that in this. Political environment, there's going to be no federal funds available, and they're going to. And they're going to need like close to thirty million dollars in funds to actually make this project work. And so um, basically, at the end of the day, the council said. We'd love you to come back when you're shovel ready and you know, you're raising the last money for construction. And um, but we're not really excited about putting in money right now just for design. If it's, if if not, if it's never going to go anywhere. Um, so anyway, that was um the recommendation to council. And so that's kind of where that lands and I assume if they do get approached down the road, they probably will. They seem supportive of the whole concept. I mean, so.
Mark, educate me. Isn't uh Interstate seventy a federal highway?
Yeah.
And wouldn't the federal government, under normal cir- circumstances? Wouldn't the federal government be the ones who would fund these overpasses and underpasses for wildlife? Because it's going to cut, cut down on fatalities on the federal highway.
Right. Yeah, I mean, eh eh normally that would definitely be more the case in terms of they would have more funding available. With the environment right now, it doesn't look like it's as likely to be available. Um, not to say there wouldn't be anything, but um, yeah. So, right. And it it's a big issue. They they brought up the damage. Just uh vehicular damage was seven hun- like seven hundred thousand dollars a year. There's like twenty-nine. I think incidents per year in that area where you have collisions and then of course. Way more when you, you know, someone gets hurt or whatever. Um, so, yeah, it's a. It it it's significant and so it's something that uh we'll keep our eyes on in the future here.
Well, maybe Frank Azor would want to make a contribution. That would be a good.
The other, the other thing, and you you probably got it, I'm sorry I wasn't here, um, but um earlier, but uh. The council did have that discussion about. They want all the units built out, ADUs all built out. So you probably heard that already tonight, but that was not. Decided until the last meeting. The council had a pretty deliberate discussion about that and just decided that. Um, yeah, we need to, we make, need to make them all happen. And uh, you know, from a planning perspective, I think that's a good thing because we're. More maximizing the density there than we would be otherwise. So, anyway, yeah, that's.
I'm I'm sorry, we didn't hear about that.
Okay, so the AD, um, so there's. ADUs proposed with on on top of the garages in all the single family homes. Um, but um, they weren't necessarily required to be. It is going to be optional to the land, to the property owner, whether they actually built that out. It's the shells being built right now, but to finish it off. And now what the council said is finish them all off. You'll, we'll include that in the price, the final price. It's going to make them a little more expensive. Um, and so a few people may end up out of the, you know, not being able to afford that. But um, it was just a concern that there, it's a lost opportunity. Otherwise, if we, someone just uses it for, you know, uh. You know, a studio space or a, you know, storage space or something like that. And so um, that was the recommendation from council on that. So that's what we're going to see um as part of this project.
So does that mean they're going to rough in the utilities for those?
All together. They were.
In the utilities and build them out?
Yes, we were going to just rough it in. And then it was going to be up to the land, the property owner to finish it off. Now, we're going to go ahead and finish those all off. And it's going to be required that each one of those is rented out. So, yep, and deed restriction on them, of course.
This is a comment. If you could afford to have the hired house with a, with ADU. Not only are you getting subsidized by the town to buy this house, now you have an additional subsidy. Because you get to rent it out and collect that rent in perpetuity. Doesn't seem right.
But that's going to.
It just doesn't seem right.
But these are, but most of, these are still all deed restricted.
I understand that, but you're giving people who have money. An extra subsidy. People who have the most money, the most expensive units in this subdivision. That's already subsidized by our taxpayer, our tax dollars. They will then buy this thing. Yes, it's a little bit more expensive, but then they'll be able to rent that ADU for. Twenty-five hundred dollars a month in perpetuity. And they get that money stuck in their pocket because they can afford an extra two hundred thousand dollars. Or whatever it's going to be for this unit. And they will get that back and more. Just wanted to state that.
No, I hear you, but uh, you know.
It puts a bad taste in my.
But if you look at Wellington neighborhood, there's, you know, that happens there too. It's allowing people to afford their mortgage. You know, that, not not all these people, you know, have got limitless resources.
I I I understand. I understand. I I I get that. It just seems like we're.
Yep, thank you.
Also that there's a risk to having an ADU. I have a friend that has one and she has a really hard time finding people. You guys act like there's tons of demand. They have had it up for rent for several months, very low interest in it. So I don't, you know, there is a risk in having an ADU that you don't rent it out, so.
Because they beat down my door every time I put it on.
Wellington, they go immediately.
She's not in the Wellington, so there's, I don't think a bus that goes by there, so.
Yeah, I don't think it'll be a issue here in terms of finding people.
You're just concerned it's going to take away demand.
But it's also an expense to keep it up. Uh, things need maintenance.
Yeah, they didn't subsidize my.
That's, that's uh my update. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? Wasn't that enough? No, Mike, we could, we could stay here. I have the power. With that, I will close the April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five Planning Commission meeting and thank you all. No, thank you.